Jim and Dwayne, if you guys are ready, I guess it's 6:33, we can call the meeting to order. And and the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 14th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 14th, 2020.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, and I'm going to just for a second, because I want to practice this number one, but also because I think we should show everyone. I'm going to put the agenda up on the screen just for a minute, so everyone can see that our next item on the agenda is an update on COVID-19 from Scott Martinson, a CRAD director, and also from Sherry Carlson.
Hi, Deep River's been relatively quiet, which is very good. River still has nine cases, no fatalities fortunately. So as a community, it seems to be doing a really good job. So that's great. And you know, four of those cases are at one address. So you know, widespread community transmission certainly not happening at this moment throughout Deep River, which is good. Even if people are home that are positive, that weren't tested, that's still good too, you know, that means they weren't sick enough. If they were to go to the hospital, so that's, that's all good news. Statewide, the hospital rates went down for, I believe, the third or fourth day. That's great news. The amount of deaths is still high. You still like that number to get lower, of course. But it seems to be heading in the right direction. And it definitely seems like social distancing is working. The next step is where it gets critical, and that's what's going to be talked about for the next month or so, specifically as we head into summer. So district wide, we had three new cases today. A couple in Chester, one more at Aaron Manor in Chester, and then a resident in Haddon. So relatively quiet, but still cases, new cases, pretty much daily. But no new deaths, thank goodness. So that's kind of where we're at.
That's great. Thanks. Thanks very much for the report and for all the work you guys are doing. Just out of curiosity, more than anything, our district is so kind of, we've got a couple of holes in it. So it seems as if Clinton has got a pretty good number of cases. I'm assuming just like Deep River, some of those are already healed and back to, back to normal, normal life. But what's happening like in Westbrook and Essex, to kind of fill the gaps in our
They're at, I actually looked at those today. Westbrook's at like 16 or 15. Killingworth's like 14 or 15, and Essex is about 14 or 15. So relatively speaking, you know, when it comes to populous, Deep River is one of the lower, I would probably say, in Middlesex County. So I haven't really triangulated too far, but yeah, they all run about that 14, 15 level. You know, and Chester would be at kind of like our level in Deep River here, if they didn't have, you know, 30 or in Marin, excuse me, Aaron Manor cases. So that kind of skews the data as far as, you know, community-wide transmission, when 80 to 90% of it's in one nursing home. But yeah, we're in pretty good shape, Middlesex County in general. And New London County is in really good shape, which is super. So that kind of helps our cause, you know, coming that way too.
Yep. No, I think I just read an article. It's like some of the doctors and nurses from Lawrence Memorial were moving, were going to kind of move operations into some of the mid-state hospitals, just to help out while they still had lack of activity. So that's a positive thing. It sounds, you know, it sounds like, and it's too early to really get into much talk about opening up. You know, we're in the planning of the planning stage, I guess.
Yeah, you can't really strategize until that governor plan comes out. You know, the, once he lays out a plan, then you can, you know, pick apart and choose, so to speak. I'd imagine there's going to be more choices than uniformity, but we'll see. You know, I don't know if they're going to say, you know, all public beaches, all public pools, you know, I don't know how that's going to work yet. So it's hard to really plan when you don't know, you know, what the next step is. So more to be seen, but the public health side, at least the cases in Connecticut, certainly our area, are, you know, heading in the right direction.
Yeah, that's good. What do we? I think we look for 14 days where numbers reduce before we start to really think we're
We're about six right now, and we're testing at two, at least 2,000 tests a day.
Okay.
We're showing, so again, we have to see what that plan says as to how many tests they're going to require a day. New software, we have another training Friday on the new software for contact tracing, which will be really quick and, you know, be able to contain hotspots.
Great. And from what I, from what I understand, they've recruited quite a bit of people to, quite a few people to help out with that.
They want to recruit like 500. I even heard it on the local radio station today while I was in the car. They're asking people who have medical background, who are retired, who are related to a school of, of health to call up, and they give the, the number to call up.
Okay.
But we have, we have a core group of nurses that are school nurses that we're hoping to utilize for our contact tracing.
Great, great. Thanks.
They really want to get it up to, you know, 2,000 still unfortunately pretty low. Cause I think last time I checked, it's only like 3 or 4% of the population of Connecticut. So they did want to get it up to at least 10,000 a day to start kind of that process. So we'll see how that goes. But that's the number they're shooting for, about 10,000 tests.
So it sounds like we're, we're, we're very close to halfway to that 14 days of reduction. And that's, that's, that sounds great. That's, that's a couple of days more than I thought my math was going to, so that's good. Does anybody, Dwayne or Jim, do you have any questions for?
The only thing is any, anything more with the River, Riverview Lodge? Everything okay up there, Scott?
Yeah, so far so good. And Sherry can chime in, but knock on wood, yeah, great.
Yeah, no problems. I did go down. The PPE seems to be getting a little better. I went down and got Deep River and Chester EMS's supplied today in North Haven, because I'm down there to get our supply too, so.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for all the work you're doing as far as supplies go and what you guys are sharing. Jim, did you have something?
No, I don't have anything. I just saw, it must be getting a little easier for, for the PPE, because they're giving, I don't know who did it, but they're giving away up at the Xfinity Center today. They were given five masks per car, no preconditions, no reservations or anything. So that at least to me indicates that the PPE, the masks are a little bit more readily available, so that they can start giving away. I hope that's, I hope that's the case.
Well, next week they're going, if the small businesses can register to receive PPE online, and that will be coming out next Tuesday.
Okay. Yeah, right. And I think I'm trying to get a little more information on the PPE for the businesses, so that'll be, hopefully we can get people connected with what they're going to need for the next few months. Does any, I guess we can open it up to any, any of our visitors if there are any questions for the health district while we're on this.
I don't know if anybody on wonders who, you know, I see Scott's got his CRAD t-shirt on. It's just, you know, officially what, what is CRAD?
For those that might not know. Connecticut River Area Health District.
Yeah, I know, CRAD, yeah. We're synonymous with us, but you're right. You know, I don't think a lot of people even knew what a health department was before this crisis, but the CRAD makes it confusing. But it's hard to say, you know, Connecticut River Area Health District, but yeah, so we, just so you know, we represent Deep River was one of the original towns with Old Saybrook and Clinton back in 2006. And then over the years, we added Chester and we added Haddon. So we're currently five towns, about a 40,000 population total, so. Plenty to do. And it's good your contractors are still out there. You know, the guys are still working, Septic, Testol, so that's a good thing. And they're actually quite busy, you know, with permits and stuff. So it could be the summer of hot tubs and pools and decks, you know. So you might see a side of that increase a lot deeper.
See that, that's right.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I had a, you know, you mentioned that people never heard of the health department before, but Deep River, CRAD has been great for Deep River. A couple of years ago, a couple of summers ago, we had a neighborhood with some contaminated wells that the state was really trying to railroad that operation. And CRAD did a great job of managing that and, and making sure that the residents were were taken care of as opposed to just being overruled and overrun by the state health department. So
Exactly.
We are, we're very appreciative of CRAD and all of you guys' work. Unless there's anything else from you, I think, or from Dwayne or Jim?
No, I'm good.
Move on to the next.
Thanks, guys. Enjoy your meeting. We'll talk soon.
Thank you very much. We'll see you guys later.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if we can do this again. I will bring the agenda back up. And we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is item number four, the discussion of the possibility of a tax anticipation note. This is something that I did a bunch of research on. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we adopted the low interest tax rate for our citizens and our businesses. As a result of that, and, and, and just the, the economic downturn, we're anticipating at least a 30-day gap in revenues, starting in July and running through July, August, and September. October 2nd is when that 90 days of low interest rate program ends. And we're, we're working on what, how much money that we anticipate we might be short. But this really, I want to talk about this with you guys tonight, and then with the Board of Finance later on tonight, about the possibility of arranging for a tax anticipation note. I've spoken to our bond agents and our bonding attorneys, and they are they're working on how we would go about doing that, number one. Number two, you know, what the what the process will be. What that would do would be a short-term loan, really based strictly on the anticipation that when our taxes do come in, we will pay that, that back. It's a, it's a, it's not an uncommon thing in times like this. I think a number of our neighboring towns are setting up to do the same thing. So
You say, you say short-term Angus, what's short-term? 90 days?
I would suggest it's 90 days. You know, we anticipate that we will, we will have a shortfall. Our reserve fund is, is close to where it's supposed to be, but not enough to go, not enough to go three months. So we are hopeful that we can get 90 days, or 90 or 60, 90 or 180 days of a borrow based on revenue. It will be paid back as soon as the revenue comes in. It should not cost us anything other than the interest and the cost of the bond. But it's, it's very important for our community to be able to maintain our services, even simple things like that, you know, the cost of managing this emergency.
It's not, it's not the same situation it was a few years back, where the town had to go and look into something similar to that. So this isn't, in itself, it's an unprecedented, but you gotta have, you gotta have the money to, to keep the town going.
That's right. That's exactly right. It's not, it's not dissimilar, but it is, it is different. This is based, this is, there's no collateral or anything like that on this, not that the town usually has collateral, but it's, it's simply based on the anticipation that the tax revenue will come in. It's already, you know,
The only things that's, make sure that, you know, our citizens know that it's strictly for the cash flow for the taxes. Nothing else. We aren't going to buy anything else. It's strictly for the cash flow that we anticipate being slow coming in. You know, that's all that I want to make sure that the citizens know that, that we aren't just going to go take a loan out to have a loan.
No, not at all. No, we're not looking for that at all. It's really just, just to carry us over during the short period of time that, that the taxes are delayed.
I was going to say, I would hope that, you know, when we had this discussion, when we did it, that those, those in town that are able to pay their taxes on time do. Because, you know, it's, it's important for us to keep the, keep the town going, and, and, and we understand if they, if they put it off the 90 days or whatever, but there's a lot of people in town that can, can pay, and we hope that they do, because again, the town needs to, needs to keep financially on, you know, going.
That's right. That's, that's precisely what, what it's for. And I think we will message that as well as we can. And that's partly why we're discussing it here tonight. We're not, I don't anticipate any action until, until we don't, I want to suggest that we don't have, can't really do it until July anyway. So but if we, you know, we need, I think July 1st, we need to be ready by. So this is really just the idea to get it, get everyone thinking about it. Any, any documentation that I get from our bond council, I'll share with everyone. So we, so at our next, our next meeting, we can discuss it further. And at the next joint meeting, we can take action if we deem it necessary.
It's better to talk about it and plan for it than to have
That's, that's the whole idea. That's why we put it on the agenda today.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll talk about it a little more later on. Let's see if we can move on to the next, unless you have any other statements about that right on. I'm going to go to share the screen, back to the agenda. And we can see that the next item on the agenda is just a discussion regarding the Connecticut 2.0 insurance coverage for municipal employees. Stop sharing. I think we have someone else. Karen's iPhone is here. Karen might be, but okay, the discussion and the change to the 2.0, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that we, we've been working with the state, the state insurance, the state has a Connecticut 2.0. They, they manage municipal, state, and other, and regional school systems insurance for, for for a good portion of the state. It's a growing pool all the time. The insurance costs going through Region 4 had been so extreme, and that the increases were so high every year after year after year, that we explored going over to, to join this 2.0. It's continuing with Anthem, which is good. That was a big deal for the union to be able to do that. But the union needed to vote, part of the contract, part of the union contract is that they needed to approve any changes in the insurance. They had that vote yesterday, and it, and it was unanimous, a decision to agree to change over to the Connecticut 2.0 plan. So we're going to be doing that. We'll be signed up for July 1st, and it looks like about $70,000 savings this year. So that's, that's a good deal for our budget. It also increases average, have averaged 5% increases over the past three years. But I think this year it's an 8% increase over what they had last year. But for us, it's a, it's an actual decrease in cost. And and I like 5 to 8% a heck of a lot better than 12 to 18, so.
I second that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very, very happy about that.
And you don't have to worry about the unfunded, the, the reserve fund that the residents probably don't know about, that, you know, we don't have to fund anymore.
That's right. The only, the only portion of that that we're going to continue to contribute towards is, is the elementary school portion.
Yep.
And my hope is that the school system will switch over to Connecticut 2.0 next year too, because there's no good reason that I can think of for them to stay with where they are. Self-funding just seems to not be working. So that's, that gets through the agenda. We've got an audience of citizens. The really, the thing that I'd like to to speak about before we get going is the public hearing for the, for the approval of the budget. Kept that at our at May 5th at 7:30. We're going to do that via Zoom. And we will present, the Board of Finance will present the the proposed budget, and we will discuss with, and, and and have hopefully a conversation with citizens who are able to attend via Zoom. We're going to try to set up an email account, so that folks that have comments and are not able to participate via Zoom will be able to send in their comments and questions to the Board of Finance. And hopefully be able to answer, and have those answered. The town meeting is, we don't have a town meeting this year because of the executive orders, but we will instead have a special Board of Finance meeting, but we have kept that at our regularly scheduled town meeting, May 18th. And that's where the Board of Finance, unless things, unless things change and the executive orders are repealed, that's where the Board of Finance will, will approve a budget instead of nullifying it. So just wanted to make sure that folks, folks hear that and folks understand that, and hopefully folks come on May 6th, May 5th, and attend, attend the public hearing and see the presentation of the budget. And that's it for me, other than to reiterate what Scott and Sherry were talking about. Deep River has done a tremendous job as far as with maintaining low levels of confirmed cases of, of COVID-19. We're very, very pleased about that. We, I've noticed some significant changes in behavior at the parks, at the, and around town with folks wearing the masks or keeping distances in smaller groups. So I'm very appreciative of that. Now, open up to the audience of citizens. We have some folks here. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts?
Yeah, Angus, Ben Whalen.
Thanks, Ben.
Um, I just wanted some clarification on what you're talking about, the 2.0. Is that for the town workers, or is that exclusively for the, the town hall people, or is that exclusively for the school system?
The Connecticut 2.0 is the town municipal employees, not the schools, not the elementary school, not Region 4. It's for the town hall, town highway department are paid for by the citizens. CRAD employees and the certain comments employee have, they participate in it, but they, their, their own agencies pay for themselves.
So, so this would fall under a contractual negotiation with the organizational municipal employees? Cause there was a change to, to the, to the plan.
I guess that's correct, yeah.
So were there any other changes that were implemented in that as well?
No.
So the pension issues that, that were talked about before, or any other issues had, were not part of that negotiation?
Not at all.
So on that contract that actually I had requested from you before that was unsigned, how long was that contract unsigned?
The contract is signed. I just haven't scanned it, or you sounded as if you wanted a paper copy, so you're welcome to come in and get that.
I had requested the current binding contract, and the one that you had sent through went back from 2018 to 2022 with no signatures on it. So I was questioning
Ben, there is, there is a contract that is signed, that was signed. I believe that the contract was signed in, in the beginning of 2019. It went unsigned, it went unsigned for, I want to suggest it was six months. But we continued under the previous contract as, as we would expect. And we did that all through, you know, the state was monitoring our, our negotiations as we went along, to ensure that, that the union was, was treated fairly.
So a couple of other questions then, is that you did forward over the town handbook, and it says in there that the town shall provide, provide and pay the cost of medical insurance for all full-time employees.
There you go.
Well, if you look at that contract, they're actually giving a percentage themselves.
That was the, that was the original handbook, Ben, and during the last negotiations, because I was part of it with Angus, we implemented that the town employees start paying a percentage. Because as health insurance rises, it's a big burden on the, on the town citizens. So we asked the employees to contribute 2.5%. First year was zero, second year was 2.5, third year was 5.0, and next year is going to go to seven, seven and a half percent. And any new hire, I believe, was 12 and a half percent, Angus. I'm not
Correct, yep.
So again, the handbook says that, but the contract is, we negotiated it, and that's what we did, what best interest for the town and its community.
So
Just to bring you up to speed, just
I, I, excuse me Angus, I'm going to ask Dwayne a question because he had just answered on this. So Dwayne, that just answered one, one of my questions, actually, that I've been trying to, to get some answers on. And you just said that you were involved in negotiations. So, so who else was involved on, on the town end of, of the negotiations?
Board of Selectmen.
I asked Dwayne.
Angus, myself, and I think Bill was on, Bill was a selectman at the time.
Okay. And who, who was involved from, from the municipal employee side?
Who are you asking that question to?
Dwayne.
Pete Lewis. He's the president for the local.
Okay. And was there any legal counsel involved in those for either side?
Legal counsel looks at the contracts after we negotiate it.
But were they involved in the actual negotiations?
No.
They were not?
We negotiate, Ben. Again, I'm not sidetracking a little. That's my livelihood. I negotiate union contracts.
That's why I was glad to hear that you were there, Dwayne, and I asked you the question.
Okay, for, for a living. So we try to leave attorneys out of it if we can. Because it's a cost to the town. I represent the town of Canterbury as my normal job. I represent the highway department over there. If we can negotiate with the town, the town and myself, and save the cost of the attorneys, we do that. And that's what we try to do here in Deep River. Now I put my other hat on, because now I'm on the town side versus the union side. And if Angus and myself and a selectman can negotiate a fair contract, where it's equitable for all parties, for both sides, and we can do it without the cost of the attorneys, that's what we did. And the legal counsel looked at the contract after we were done negotiating it.
Okay.
So again, I, I felt very good with it. There were some great changes that were made to the contract that favored the town. Again, I'm surprised, you know, as a union representative, you know, I'm, I'm wearing two hats here. But it was a very good contract for both parties, I believe.
So, so what other contracts were in there, or excuse me, changes were in there then, Dwayne?
The amount of sick days and personal days that can be carried over and payout at the end.
And that, that was it? Because I've been asking for, for these copies. I mean, it's, it seems that people are aware of them, and I haven't been able to get copies of this stuff.
Well, not, not, not to sidestep anything, Ben. And I'm not speaking for Angus, because he's a grown man, but I think, you know, everyone's been very stressed out right now with, with the coronavirus. Again, I'm not answering for Angus. I'm just speaking myself. And you know, a lot going on with the coronavirus. The budget's been tearing us up, trying to save the taxpayers as much increase as possible. And we're, we're in tough shape. So again, I'm not answering for Angus. I'm just saying my own two cents.
Well, I, I understand that, but some of this was very easily answerable, that, that, you know, some of these questions that, that I've out there, and there's still other ones that, that I was trying to get educated onto this, and, and it, it was simple. Um, I mean, the fact that a contract's sent out, and it's not even signed, I mean, is, is, you know, then you start asking more questions. There's got to be a signed contract, and like you just said, you just told me who was there. It was pretty simple.
There, there is a signed contract as we speak, Ben. Was the wrong one sent out to you? I don't know. I'm not in the town hall. But again, there is sometimes a lapse. Again, going back to my normal job, you have a MOU, a member of understanding, that we agree on, you know, that what we've negotiated. And until the attorney can look through it, and then everyone gets back And until the attorney can look through it and then everyone gets back together and signs it. Again, I'm not making excuses. I'm just talking real life, how the union work, how the union life works.
Well, that was one of my things I asked for was any memorandums of understandings and these other things. I've asked for a lot of this stuff and it's, I understand if you look back at the stream and I think you were on there, that some of this stuff as to how we don't have a signed contract in town hall or a copy of the pension plan is difficult to understand. And I was going back, this is over a month I've been requesting this stuff. Simple things even like this, who was involved? Simple answers.
Yep. Well, I hope I answered your questions for you this evening, Ben.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anyone else? No? Okay. Dwayne, if Jim, you don't have anything else, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Jimmy, you're muted, but I'm assuming just second-
Sorry, seconded at 7:03, sorry.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
See y'all later.
All right, what do you say, folks? It is 7:33. It is time to call the April meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. Last to call it. First item is a call to order, call to order, there you go. First item would be the minutes from the, this is a long time ago, wasn't it? That would have been the March meeting.
March minutes as well as the workshops of March 31, April 7, April 14, and April 21.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, we should approve all of those.
I make motion on all the board minutes that Laura just mentioned and the March Board of Finance minutes as well, that we accept them.
I'll second it.
All second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. I can, Laura, do I have my, could you tell me what the, there it is, I've got it.
Audience of citizens.
Audience of citizens. Scott, am I to assume that you fire chief will wish to speak as a citizen?
I'd like to speak as the fire commissioner.
Which is a citizen, which is a citizen. This is your time to, this is your time.
Boy, thank you, thank you very much. Bud, so it's my appeal at this time to the board to reconsider the purchase of the fire apparatus as outlined previously in the budget in that I urge you to reconsider that I think that we've waited three years now for this vehicle and it looks like it could be postponed again. I understand there's extraneous factors on on us all around our environment and other financial things that have come up, but I'm just concerned this gets dropped and we have to go through the process again, the arduous process of specing it out, spending money to have somebody plan it, which we're contracted with someone right now to help us build that truck. And it gets pushed off any further. I think, I think we can't let the infrastructure of the town deteriorate. You know, we have to, we have to take that into consideration and regard. You know, this is an example. This particular piece of fire apparatus. So I appeal to the board to perhaps give us some some indication of when it might be raised again, if it is shut down. And give us some consideration of a date, maybe when it might be revisited at least. So that we can, you know, we can keep you know, keep our morale up and keep the town safe with the equipment that we think we need. That's all I have.
Since I am the chairman, I will take a lead. Everyone else can then jump in afterward. When we began to assemble the budget, the fire, the first payment for a borrowing of a fire truck was in there. And it stayed in there for quite a while until we received a an indication or a bill, however you would like to phrase it, from the regional school, which increased our our budget by over a mill. We then, to mitigate the amount of increase we would pass on to the town, we went through the budget and took about just about everything out. And that fire truck, at least the debt, the first payment was such a large number. It stayed in for the longest while, but it eventually came out. Now, we have, while it came out, we continue to talk about it virtually every week at our workshop. Kind of misdecision on how to proceed. We had talked last week about the potential to borrow in the soon and have the payment in the next budget year. However, there was the concern on the part of the board that due to the health and the economic crisis that is strapped to the health pandemic we have, we just could not commit ourselves to that large of a expenditure until we had better information on when the economy of our town, the financial status of our citizens was a little bit more stable. Now, maybe that is a attempt to reach your last question. The I'm about to say agreement. It may be too strong to use the word agreement. But the thoughts on the Board of Finance is we're aware of the commitment, aware of the need. And when there is more assurance on the stability of our town and our tax base, we would return to meet that obligation. There's my attempt to summarize. Does anyone wish to minimize, add to that, subtract from that?
I would, I would agree with that summary. I think there's a very, unlike, you know, like a few months ago, things materially have changed, you know, within the state, within the town, within the country in all honesty. And the, you know, you can just look on Main Street, you know, look on our Main Street, drive down, you know, Deep River at seven o'clock at night, any night during the week, and take a look around and you won't see people conducting normal economic activity, right? Red House is quiet. Things are very quiet. So all these businesses that before were, you know, they were doing all right. They were holding their own, doing all right. They're not conducting normal business in any manner right now. And I think when we look overall at the budget, the town budget, we as the Board of Finance have control over literally about 20% approximately of the actual expenditures that impact the taxpayers in Deep River. Approximately 80% is, comes from the Region 4. You know, it's the Board of Ed vote that dictates where 80% of the tax spend of the town of Deep River goes. So when we go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb and look at things, it's not that we're, personally, I'll speak for myself. It's not, I'm not adverse to a new fire engine or a new firehouse or anything. But I just think that it has to be done at a time when we have economic stability and the finances are on a level basis such that we know what the impact is going to be. I think there's, you know, there's probably a fair number of people in town this year that are going to have a hard time paying their taxes on their house. And that's my concern, you know, I'm trying to speak from my perspective for the taxpayers and the constituency in the town. And it's, it's an expenditure that this year, it's, we do have control over it, right? We do not have to expend the money this year. It's not that we shouldn't spend for that. We shouldn't, we should invest in all those kinds of things. We should invest a new firehouse, a new truck, et cetera. But I don't know that this moment in this current economic environment is the time to do so. That's my two cents.
Thank you. I think as citizens first, we understand that, you know, and we do, we concur with that. I just want to keep the spark alive on this.
No, the spark, I think the spark's alive within the Board of Finance. It's just this moment is a particularly challenging moment, I think, for our town and for our state and for everybody.
I agree.
There's been a lot of loss. There's a lot of, you know, loss personally and loss economically.
Jump in and play word games. I think it is far greater than a spark. I think there is a true recognition of our obligation to the fire department and the need for the truck. It's just, and there is, there is division amongst the board on how to proceed, but certainly the majority of the board, both the finance, the Board of Finance and the selectmen, now is just not the time to take on any additional debt, either in the current budget or to defer it into the next budget, which was one of the things we discussed, so. We're repeating ourselves, but in a trade for all of us.
Yep, I understand. Thank you very much for the explanation and I appreciate hearing your thoughts. Thank you very much.
The fire department is not far from our thoughts. It does. Bud and John said we discussed it at every single workshop and every single meeting when we're out on the street talking with people in the town. It is one of the things that gets brought up as far as a new building for the fire department and taxes and oh my God, I can't pay my taxes on time is what they're saying. So we are trying to take both sides, you know, hear everybody and do what's best as far as we can for the entire town.
And I just want to say that, you know, I take my decision seriously. I
Oh, yeah.
I'm in fact a warden for, you know, the well-being and personal safety of our firefighters and also a concerned citizen as I'm appointed by the selectmen. So that, you know, that being said, I understand every point that you've made. And I appreciate your consideration. I really do. And I think on behalf of the, you know, the fire department, you know, we always consider your consideration. And we're grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to pipe in my two cents, and this is not speaking for the Board of Selectmen. This is speaking for myself. The department has put a lot of time and I can't say that I'm not trying to convince you to change your minds because I am, but I'm not going to argue the point. I just, this is a point that hasn't come up in our previous discussions. I think Scott touched on it a little bit. But we, we as a town, the fire department in particular, have put effort into the construction of this truck. It's not under construction yet, but they're developing it, they're ordering it. Got people that are working towards this truck. If we delay this, then that'll be a beginning all over again. It's not as if we can drive down to London and find a fire truck on the lot. This is, it's a year-long process. The beginning of the process is, is yes, we're going to fund it, but once we decide to fund it, and this is why we're where we are, we decided to fund it last year. It took a year for them to manufacture it. Or to get ready, to get to plan the manufacture of it. And then we'd have more time for them to take delivery of it. So there will be a long delay from the time that, if we delay this again, there will be a longer delay between the time when we say, okay, this is, now's the time, things have settled down. This was not as bad economically on the community as we thought it was going to be. It's, or it's, things are back to where they should be. Let's fund this. We're looking at a year from then before we actually are spending the money, which is why I proposed the proposal that we did where we wait until July to borrow the money so we don't have to take that payment on until the 21, 22 budget season. So, and that's where we begin to repeat ourselves. So I'm not going to go into that anymore. But I did want to point out something that had not taken place in our Board of Finance meetings, workshops. And that's all. I do hope-
Bud, may I speak?
Yep.
Please, please.
I'd like to say to Scott and Tim, I am in a vast minority of Board of Finance members who think we should get a truck and finance it this year. I think we put it off long enough. I always, I don't want to belabor points either, but I always say that there's always an excuse. I wish we would not put it off. I wish we would allow the firemen to get a truck. I would ask, and I'm sure it's not going to happen, but I would ask my fellow board members to reconsider as well. I think it's important that the fire department have it. That's all I'm going to say.
Any other board member have a question or a comment? All right.
One about the building. Where are we on a building plan at this point?
We have a plan that's, I think it's finalized in draft form. We know what we can do with the footprint on that property on Union Street. We have a plan that's virtually ready to go out for pricing. And that is Angus has copies of that. It's available. The last tweaks, so to speak, have been made on that. It accommodates the equipment that we need in that building, the present equipment. It accommodates safety for the firefighters, upgrades that are needed. And we're very close to sending that out to get some pricing on it. Just waiting for an okay from the town hall.
Yeah, we're, as far as going out for pricing, as soon as you guys tell me that this, these drawings are where they're going to be, we'll send it, I'll send it out to Munger Construction. They'll do the same thing that they did for us last time.
Yeah, we'll have one more, one more meeting with our ad hoc committee on that and I'm sure we'll send it right up to you.
Yes, just give me, in fact, I'll give them a heads up that it's on, it's going to be on its way.
So the plan is almost ready.
The architecturals are done. The preliminary site layout is done. We will have to get some engineering involved. That'll be part of, part of the cost of the
And no guesstimate on what the cost for that would be?
We're shooting for three, three and a half. Three was the goal. And that's hopefully where we're going to land, but I expect that it's going to be in the vicinity of three and a half million.
Angus, it's Tim. Can I have a moment?
Yeah, it's the Board of Finance meeting, but yeah.
Well, Bud, could I have a minute here?
Oh, please.
So I want to follow up Angus with some of the things you talked about getting back to the truck. A point I'd like to either make or ask is that I understand about the school budget and as taxpayers, our hands were tied and that bomb now has been dropped in your lap to figure out. But wouldn't that have happened anyway? And typically when the school budget is presented to the towns, don't we end up as Deep River ending up having to deal with it anyways? So to me, whether it went to a, you know, went the way that it did or if it went the other way, it would have every every other year, this probably would have been the same outcome, would it have not?
I think so.
I would take it, your points are good. We are constantly surprised by the Board of Education. And the magnitude of this year's was a little bit larger than usual, took us by surprise. But you need to add on the board's concern about what's on the other side of this pandemic and what it will do with the town. That's probably the biggest reason that we are attempting to hold back. And we cut substantial portions of our own budget, other portions of the budget. So it is the pandemic that we're attempting to provide some relief to. So your question is good, but I think it is the current conditions that drive some of that.
No, I understand. I mean, some of the other points that I wanted to make was you know, I think the process moving forward, if this truck does not make it in the budget that you folks are putting forth now, the process moving forward needs to be different. The way it went this past year was extremely confusing to myself. And up until just a couple of months ago, I still didn't understand the whole process and how the funding was put in the current budget we're in now. But yet taken out or not funded or something and it's, and I've gotten a lot of questions from members in the last week or so and saying, how is this truck not happening when I see $650,000? the $650,000 line item in the budget? I don't understand this and I'm trying to explain this to members. And it quite frankly, it's hard. It's hard to explain why it was done the way it was done and how it happened that way and how we got to where we are today. At the budget workshop meeting a couple of months ago, we were asked where we were at with the truck and basically told to hurry up. We need to get these numbers. Hurry, hurry, hurry. You've got to get the numbers and get this truck ordered, which the Truck Committee put additional meetings in their calendar, starting meeting every other week with the consultant and speeding things up to try to finalize things to now be where we're at now. But moving forward from here, my request would be that if this does not get funded, that the process needs to change and be a lot more clear. Because it the way it is right now, even for myself, is completely, it's unclear. I I don't understand it, how we got to where we're at. And I know Angus, you you sent me a nice email a while back because I did question it and I did forward that off to one member who was really asking, and I did not check today to see if he replied and if he understood it. But you did explain it, which made a little bit more sense a while back. Going back to our Board of Finance meeting, Angus, you had mentioned about the truck maybe being bundled in the fall with the building. And I questioned our economic times and even putting forth that building to the taxpayers and if it's a a good idea or not. I I as much as I'd like that building, I it's I think that's going to it was a hard sell before and I think it's just going to be that much harder. If the plans are ready or not and we get final numbers back, I think it's just going to be unfortunate for all of us. It's just going to be tough to sell to the taxpayers, I would think. So I'm not sure if that's what maybe one of the plans you've all you have all talked about moving forward. But I I see that being a tough sell. It's just my opinion and in my opinion only. And we just got to keep reminding ourselves. I know I sent Bud, I sent you an email along with Angus, Scott and copied as many people from your board there that I I had in my email list about some just some thoughts that I had after our Board of Fire Commission meeting. And we got to remind ourselves that that piece of apparatus that is being replaced now is 38 years old or should be replaced now is 38 years old. It's 1983. And we the next go around, we have two 1989s. I know I've said this all these folks at numerous meetings and it's been spelled out. I just have to say it again. The further we just keep kicking the can down the road, we're just it's going to bundle up. And we've got more apparatus coming up that's that is as old or not quite as old as the one we have now, but they're not too far behind. So these the age of this apparatus just keeps keeps climbing. So that we just you got to keep that in mind because the next go around, we have two trucks that are both the same here that we've got to think about replacing. So I think that covered my thoughts here that I had scribbled down as I was listening. I appreciate you listening to me explain myself here.
Done fine and and we use the term kicking down the was kicking down the road ourselves. It was certainly when you were at the Board of Finance, it was we had no knowledge of a increase in the Board of Ed and of the pandemic. It we it was our intention to borrow the money and when we're finished and to have the first payment in this budget. It's some things are outside our control. I apologize. All right, Board of Finance, anyone have any additional questions? Want to offer Tim any additional thoughts or move on to our next next item?
You know, I'm I'm going to ask a question that we've asked ourselves. And I I asked Scott this question the other day in a private conversation. And maybe Tim and Scott could could educate all of us a little bit more. I didn't understand it so much. But Scott, we were talking and I mentioned the, you know, the thought that whenever there's a fire, it seems as if there are fired, you know, there are trucks and apparatus coming from from almost all of our surrounding towns. And if that's the case, is that is it worth a conversation about, you know, how much need is there for us to have two or three or whatever we have? And I don't know the answer to this, which is why I asked you. And you explained it to me that that and I hope that you can explain it to everyone or you and Tim can explain it to everyone, that the trucks that are coming from the other towns are not they're not called so much because we need those trucks as that their transportation for the other firefighters. Their transporting personnel is almost more important than the truck that they come in. Is that is that an actor of representation?
Yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
No, you you said it exactly right, Angus. So going back to the amount of apparatus that we have, I said this to Scott, we had a we had a talk yesterday. I am 100% in favor of if you if the two boards wanted to bring it in and this would have to happen, obviously, you know, in the future here coming up. But bring an outside person in or a company in to actually look over and look the ISO rating, you know, and and tell come back to you folks with a professional opinion, not opinion, professional.
Recommendation?
Recommendation or or a report on exactly what the town of Deep River needs for emergency services and apparatus and stuff. I'm 100% in favor of that. So but I can't, I know, you know, in the past, Angus, we we've looked at the ISO rating and through the building committee level, we looked at it as far as where the firehouses had to be and which apparatus had to be in which sections of town to not interrupt the taxpayers' home insurance rates. I remember that being looked into. I think Peter Woodcock, Chief Woodcock, had done a lot of that. So I'm, you know, I'm in favor of that if that's something that the committee or the boards wanted to look into in the future. Moving forward, you're right. When it comes to a structure fire, we can use the one up here on Hemlock only a couple of weeks ago as an example. But when we request for mutual aid or another alarm assignment to be added to to the call, that brings in additional apparatus, which is sometimes needed. You may not see it at the scene. Apparatus may be at a water hole somewhere or a hydrant, not even near the fire, it could be miles away, setting up a draft site to fill tankers. We had that at Hemlock Drive. We had an Essex truck that was in that was at the water tank by scenic view, set up and ready to to relay water up to us at the top of the hill. So but the biggest thing is is bringing manpower and equipment tools could be hand tools, could be SCVAs. You know, we bring an old Sabre for any fire in town for a rapid intervention team. So they come in with apparatus. So if we go to a second alarm assignment on any structure or any building, we will we'll see an old Sabre piece of apparatus come through town. And that's what they're doing. They're there to protect us and go in if any of our members get trapped, get disorientated, get lost within a structure. That's what their job is to do. And you'll if you happen to witness a fire, you know, if you're watching and you see a group of people standing in a front yard and it looks like they're not doing anything, most likely that's what they are as they are the RIT team and they're they're ready to go when needed. But you you said it exactly right, Angus. That's that's typically why you see that manpower come or mutual aid coming into town is bringing additional manpower and hand tools, things like that. Sometimes, a lot of times, it could be equipment, too. Scott, did I cover that, what we talked about yesterday?
Yeah, I think so, Tim. We you said it very well. So that, you know, there is a protocol at at Dispatch. I understand that when when chiefly asked for assistance, it goes out and the the appropriate personnel is notified in other towns and, you know, they arrive on fire equipment. So the idea that that, you know, we don't need all this fire equipment is somewhat misled. There are there are scenarios when we need to pump water long distances and we certainly need those engines we have to get the water to, for instance, a ladder truck. So Tim and I have had long conversations about these scenarios. I come from a volunteer firefighting background years ago and I'm active with the NFPA, so I'm in touch with it. And I do know that, you know, certain scenarios require certain amounts of equipment, certainly chiefly in the past chiefs. And our firefighters are seasoned enough to know what Deep River needs and I trust that that they're you know, that what they ask for is exactly what we need. I have no reason to think not. I am, I think it's a good idea to have to have our fire department study done to see exactly what we need and what we have, what we don't have. And I think some funds should be appropriated to do that in the near future.
I think that's a I think that's a really good idea and and that was I think that something like that might go a long way towards another grant application as well to include that with that. So regardless of where this ends up and on this this conversation regarding the truck, that study, I think, is something that we will look into.
Thank you. We'd appreciate that.
All right. Any additional questions, anyone? Thoughts, summaries? If not, we'll move on in our agenda, which is, I believe, Tommy.
Yeah, thanks, Bud. Hey, great to see everyone. Nice friendly faces.
If you if you like, I will share the screen with your report. I don't know if that got emailed out to everyone or not.
Oh, really? Well, Kathy said she was mailing it out yesterday because I had asked her if she would do that.
Does everyone have it and need to see this on the screen?
No, I have it.
I got it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I got it.
Okay, the big news, plummeting interest rates. So I'm going to have you look at the the top portion on our general fund fund accounts. You're going to see People's United, our municipal money market account. The interest rate now is point two oh. If we went back to January, January 27th meeting, we're at one and a half percent. The February 24th meeting, we're at one and a half percent on March 23rd. It was 1% and now it's down to point two. I did I spoke to Michael Kegler of People's United. He's a Vice President of Government Banking, takes care of municipalities. He said, it's just due to the economic crisis. It's it's nothing just with People's United. It's with every bank because of, you know, this, again, the economic crisis that we've been hit with. He feels this rate is going to really will probably not change until after the election. That's that's what he told me. Having said that, I just put my feelers out. I called Liberty Bank and they said they offer a rate of point seven five percent on a liquid account, like a money market account. But it's only up to $250,000 and then any monies over that, we would receive point one oh percent. So that that didn't do much for me at all. I just put out feelers with Essex Savings Bank. They have what they call a tiered money market account. So depending on how much money you keep in the the account will determine what your interest rate is. Their high rate, it was based on maximum, their maximum rate is point zero nine. So I guess, having said that, point two oh is not good. But it's I'm going to I'm going to put feelers out and see what what other banks are offering too, just to see if we can get something a little bit better than that. And then if you look at, we have a Liberty Bank account, but that's our business money market account. It's paying 2.35%. Boy, that was a that was a great rate. It was a special rate that they offered back in June 11th, 2019. It was based on new money that was being brought into Liberty Bank with a maximum of $500,000. What they did for me, Steve, the manager, said, well, you know, you have an account with Liberty Bank. He said, you can keep that and just add the $500,000 onto that account. So we had like a blended rate. But it's at 2.35%. Unfortunately, that is coming due at the end of this month. It's coming due Thursday. So they told me they're going to be coming out tomorrow with with a new rate on that particular product. I did speak to Melissa Hurd. She's the from Liberty Bank. She's with government banking. Again, she she takes care of municipalities also. She is going to get back to me tomorrow and trying to put together some sort of package for us. Hopefully, we'll be able to do a little bit better than we're we're doing now. But again, I mean, that's that's where we are today. And it's again, it's not just with People's United. It's with all banks. They're they're having their their own issues. The our ECS monies, our education grant monies, we're due to receive half of half of it, actually, this Thursday, April 30th. So we'll be getting $833,348. That's our last payment that we're going to receive for the fiscal year. As you know, the the payments come out three times a year. They come out with a quarter, a quarter of the amount will actually be in October. The other quarter comes out in the end of January and then April, we get the half of that. So the total total amount that we receive is a million six 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 ninety seven. So we'll be receiving, again, 833,348 dollars. So no, no transfers are going to be necessary this week based on, you know, those monies coming into our account. Let's see, since the last meeting on the March 23rd, I've made three transfers from People's United to the General Fund. Made one for $600,000 on March 26th, another one for $550,000 on April 3rd and another one for $600,000 on April 22nd for a total of a million $750,000. That actually was transferred again into our general fund from People's United. If you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see where we were last year with our total balances. So actually, we were a little bit behind from last year, about $48,695 behind, but we're still in decent, certainly decent shape to get us through to the end of the fiscal year. So that's it.
Questions, anyone? Tommy, do the math for me. We spend about a million dollars. How much do you think we spend a month? Million goes to school and towns, what, about a half a million? I'm just trying to get your your four million left. What have we got, two months ago?
Yeah, we have, you know, we have, again, if I look at, we have a million seven fifty that was, again, from the last, from our last report. So it's got to get, we've got to get through April and and May. Well, April, I'm sorry, May and June. And, you know, certainly, if you look at our balances, there shouldn't be any any issue with that. And again, we're going to be getting that $833,000 that will be going into the the general fund too. So, you know, we're right on target. There shouldn't be any any issues at all as far as, you know, getting getting to the end of the fiscal year.
All right, and into early part of July, I assume as well?
Well, you know, again, we'll start actually getting tax revenues that will be coming in. So shouldn't be, should, you know, we're in good shape as far as.
One could hope the rat tax revenues will come in. So yes, good.
But that was a million, 1.5 each month for spending roughly?
That's what I just said.
You know, again, it depends on it depends on on the month, too. But, you know, generally, I mean, this was, yeah, I I mean, we're in good shape. I mean, there shouldn't be any 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 problems at all. And, you know, as far as our cash flow and and whatever. And if I had to, if I had to, I, you know, just go into like a Liberty Liberty Bank account, I, you know, I'll find out tomorrow exactly what we're going to be doing with that. You know, if we can get a decent rate, I'll just keep keep it where we are now. It's they're liquid monies. So it's our monies are not tied up for any any specific length of time. We have access to those monies anytime we want them. So that's that's why I put those, invest those into. So that's, that's why I put those, invest those into money market accounts. So we have access to them right away. We need it.
Okay. Um, Tom, we do, uh, schools draw about a million a month. And I was assuming for the town, although we're going into some busy times here, so million is good enough. That gets us three. We've got four, some to point Tommy's point, we should have a cushion here.
Well, again, you have got, uh, we've got, uh, two million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand in the People's United account. We're gonna be adding on another, um, and, well, we have four hundred and thirty-three thousand in the general fund. Plus, we're gonna be adding on another eight hundred and thirty-three thousand onto that. So, um, you know, we're well over, you know.
Four million.
Yes, exactly. Probably four million, five. We have the Liberty Bank account in there too. So, yeah, we, we're not gonna have any shortfall. That's, that's for sure.
No, I'm not sure that this money reflects the, uh, the state grants that were, you know, town aid road money. Um, I don't know that that's come in yet. I know that they.
They haven't received that, yeah.
They, 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 um, they approved the expenditures, but I'm not sure that it's gotten to our bank account yet. So there's, there's a few hundred thousand dollars there. I think, uh, I think Tom's point is, is a hundred percent correct. We've got a good amount of money to get through this year. Our, my bigger concern, and we'll talk about it later on, is, is, is the beginning of next year.
Yeah, so I was thinking about it. If there is a reduction in tax revenue because of this situation we're in for a couple of months, is, can we handle that or is that gonna be a problem to us?
Well, we'll talk about that when that, well, I, I'll talk about it now if you like, but I think we can wait until selectmen recommendations to, that's up to Bud.
Okay. Um, um, let's do selectmen recommendation. We've got a tradition going.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted. Oh, right. To go right to that point, um, Board of Selectmen spoke about it briefly. Um, we, we didn't take any action. There's no need to take any action until, uh, until next month anyway. Um, and maybe even, uh, the month after that. But, um, I, I did some, did some legwork, spoke to our bond council at shipment and goodments. Um, and, about a tax anticipation note and, and the possibility of having to, uh, to borrow or to, um, to authorize the issuance of a tax, tax anticipation note in order to get through the first three months of next year, next fiscal year. Our, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen were required, the town was required to adopt one of two processes, one of two programs. Either a tax deferral or a low interest, um, rate for the, for the first ninety days of the next fiscal year. And actually, and it, it is the last ninety days of this fiscal year for any other monies that are due. So we will lose any interest rate that we would have made from, from April, May and June on people that might have made their tax payments or their, their delinquent payments. But the beginning of next year is more important where people have basically been given, uh, ninety days to pay their taxes with little or no penalty. And that's where we're anticipating that that's going to be taken advantage of. And we will not have the in, the regular influx of monies. Um, I don't think that the, anything that's escrowed can be, can participate in that, but that's, that's just a small portion. It's a good portion, but it's not, not the entirety of the tax revenue that we're going to make. We're still looking at numbers. I, I just began the conversation with a tax collector today about what we think we might need to get through those ninety days. Uh, Tom will be a part of that conversation as well. And, and so we can, by next month, we will have a better idea of monies we might need. We'll have a better idea of what the future is going to bring so that we can, um, issue this, uh, resolution. The Board of Selectmen is gonna adopt this resolution and the Board of Finance is gonna approve that as well, just to, um, to have this money available for us if exactly we need it. It's, it's different from a regular borrow because it is based strictly on the anticipation of, of taxes that we know are due, but they're not, and that, and we expect will be paid. But they will not come in, in time for us to be able to cover the regular, um, regular business of the town. That, that include, you know, police, fire, emergency services, school services and, uh, financial management services. So, that's something that we spoke about at the Board of, at the Board of Selectmen. I'd like, you know, to take any questions and we can talk about it a little bit here. Just so that you are aware that this is something that we're going to continue to, uh, I'm not sure, sure pursue is the right word, but to prepare for. Because I'm, I'm fairly confident that we're going to need it.
So this is gonna. Time for the town's expenditures as well. So my million and a half may be a little too conservative.
No, that's, that's precisely the point. When we get into our reserve fund is, is, uh, you know, it's higher than it was, but it's not as high as we'd like it to be. We can't make it ninety days with, with, with just, just on our reserve fund. So, um, we're gonna do.
And this is, um, just a short term, three or four months at most to be paid back immediately once the taxes are in?
Yes, that's, that's the point of it. I haven't spoken to the bank yet to get their terms. But, uh, just, I, I think that just like Tom was explaining to us, the interest rates are low. They're, they're low because they're also um, charging low interest rates right now and they're kind of required to.
Was there any thought Angus to, um, urging people who can pay their taxes and a regular August first, July first to pay them early, if you will, or on time, or, or is that not allowed?
I would suggest, um, no, that would, whenever we're having a conversation, we make a point of getting that message out there. Um, probably, I, I expect that we will do that in our newsletters and things like that to try to encourage folks that if you're, if you're doing okay, the town certainly needs to, um, to do this. Now, you know, these ninety days is ninety days. You know, you make a little bit more interest, uh, on that money invested than you do in paying, than you do with that, with a little bit of a penalty. So I, I do think that we will see folks that, that can pay, but and they will pay, but they're not going to pay until September.
Angus, when you talk to bond counsel, how, what is the form? And you said you don't know, so you don't have to answer the question. Borrow a certain dollar amount in the end of June, beginning of July and bring it into our, or do we borrow as needed?
No, we borrow the money.
Borrow the money.
Yeah, it goes into our budget.
Okay, that's what I assumed. Okay. Anyone have any thoughts? So in some sense, we would be borrowing before the need actually arrived.
Well, uh, no, I, I, I think we would borrow in July. I would like to have, yeah, I'd like to have the resolution, um, resolution passed and, and ready so that, um, by July one, if we need it, then we, uh, and I, I don't think we can do it before July one because then we get into payments and things like that.
Okay, okay. So, well, I, I, you, you push back on my description. So July one, two, three or four, um, we won't do it on the fourth. Um, we would borrow, what, what would we borrow? Half of what we would expect, uh, eight million dollars, something like that, seven, five?
That's what we're working on. I don't, I think eight million would be, um, more than we need. And my guess is we're probably looking at four million.
Okay, four million, that's okay. It's a good number. Four million dollars and available in our, uh, in our, whatever Tommy puts it. Uh, and we would pay it back in October.
That's, that's, that's the plan. Um, we really, just, just started convers, this conversation last, a week ago. Um, bond council sent me, uh, a proposed resolution today. Um, but that, that's just so we can look at it and get ready.
So what's, that's about, that's about three months operating, operating budget? Is that what we're borrowing? Quarter of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is pretty similar to the discussion we had December, a couple of years ago.
Correct. That's correct. No, we didn't think the state was gonna fund us. That is correct.
Multiple. I mean, this is, this is based on, this really, this wasn't something that I dreamed up or thought up or anything like that. This was, um, this really, the, the ability to do this comes through executive order seven S and seven W.
Under current conditions, does the, uh, there's orders you just referenced, who makes the decision to proceed with the borrowing? Board of Finance?
Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
Okay, is it joint vote? Certainly cannot, I mean, the, obviously the town cannot participate, so.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm still learning that as well. Um, I, I believe that it is both that the Board of Selectmen have to adopt the resolution and then move that to, to the, uh, budget setting, uh, agency, which is the Board of Finance.
Okay, all right.
And it's, it's for, and it's for regular operating costs, you know, our, our budgeted expenses otherwise?
That is very clear. Um, it is, it is for operating expenses only. It's not to go out and, and.
Okay. Yep, just, just checking.
Just for fun. So if Angus was to put a roof on the school during the summer of about forty thousand, whatever number we have in there, these not be used for that, correct? Is that what we're?
That's correct. No, 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 that is in fact what it would be used for because that is budgeted. It is in our budget.
Right.
John, were you okay with it? When you said operating expenses?
I, I, I meant like something that we've already allocated budget for and normal operating costs, just not, not for whatever.
Not for something new.
Yeah, whatever.
All right.
Angus's new Ferrari.
Yeah.
And the, the reasoning for that anticipated borrowing is because you're assuming we're not going to get taxes, enough taxes to support the budget by July. Is that what I'm?
That is my concern.
Okay.
I think because of the, the, um,
Virus.
The program that we adopted allows for, for the community to, to delay their paying of taxes for up to, up to ninety days. And, um, I, I expect that, that people will take advantage of that. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I think that the, the law was put in place for, for a real reason. People are, they expect people to be out of work and to be, you know, that's money and all that. This, this was put into place because the towns have got to continue to operate as well. You know, it's not something I wanna do, um, for any, any reason, except for a need. We, uh, it will cost us more money to do this. We have, you know, bond council fees and, and borrowing fees and interest rates and things like that.
And what would the borrowing cost?
If we have to, yeah. I don't know. I haven't gotten that far. I haven't spoken to the bank yet. I can't spoken to council, but what the cost is going to be. I would expect it will be around two, two.
It'll be around what?
Two, two and a half percent.
That's an annual number. We're earning a bar for three months.
You're talking tens of thousands of dollars in, in, um, interest fees to borrow that money.
Yeah.
It would be interest fees. That's correct.
Well, it appears as if my internet connection is unstable. So if we lose you for a minute, we'll get you back as fast as we can.
We would borrow four million dollars.
You thought you were unstable, right?
I got the same thing on mine.
It's coming through fine here still.
Yeah, me too.
We're all right here.
So it'd be about eighty grand, right? The, the two percent? And that's on the front end? They tack that on?
Yeah, I was getting, come up twenty. I'll do it again. Four million?
Four million, two percent, right?
Yeah.
Point zero two.
Yeah. That's for a whole year.
Yeah, that's, back in, uh, you know, I was coming up with twenty.
I don't know if it's front end loaded, I don't know how they do it, about ninety days. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't know the answer to it, but it'll be tens of thousands. We can, we can say what's in that.
Yeah, for a year, if it was two percent, it would be, it would be eighty grand, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Divide that by twelve. Thousand dollars a month. We've got three months, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars is what I was coming up with.
Yeah, unless they hit you on the front end and then there's just no prepayment, you know, for whatever the term is.
It'd be, yeah.
Yeah. Hard, hard, you know.
No, I'll, I'll be calling the bank in the next day or so.
I wouldn't think there's any kind of prepayment penalty on that thing. You know, what I'm saying is sometimes the borrowing fee, they, they hit you on the front end and it is what it is, right?
Could be right. Yep, yep. Front payment. Um, so Angus, when do you want to do this? This is April, May, June? So when do you want authorization for if we proceed here? Manny?
I would, I would anticipate it to be at the, at our next, uh, our next meeting.
Okay, all right.
And will you have any indication at that point how tax payments are coming in?
No, that's prior to that. We, we won't, we won't do that. We, we, we won't.
All right, so I just have a hypothetical question to ask then. In the event that tax payments aren't as dramatically delayed as the anticipation is, and we've gone ahead and borrowed that money, we now have that money and we're paying that interest on that money.
Correct.
There's no way of, of disclaiming that borrowing and saying, okay, guys, we don't, we don't need it. We're, we're not going to do this, right? You're committed to the borrow at that point.
Well, you're not committed to borrow until you sign all the paperwork.
Well, that's assuming that's what you've done.
Yeah, well, if, if we've, if we've signed all the paperwork, yes, we're absolutely committed to the bar.
If we pay that off early, I would think it's, it's based on a per diem.
I would think so too.
So that we can, uh, we can knock down that interest amount, uh.
Considerably, right?
Right.
Yeah, unless it's an upfront. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would be, John.
No? Okay, yeah, that's, right, that's, depends on the bank, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, we'll call, we'll call the banks that we've done business with and, and I'm sure they'll do their best for us.
All right. Were you thinking of, you're thinking of Dime Bank?
Dime is, uh, is certainly towards the top of the list. They, they, they've been great for us in the past.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be touching base with you on, on this.
Good, yeah, good. I expect, I, you know, I, I'm gonna learn a lot more about this next week, so.
You haven't spoken to any of the neighboring towns, Chester or Essex, to, to see if, well, I don't think.
Essex is probably going to, Essex is going to adopt this tomorrow, probably.
Oh, really?
Next week, whenever their next elections meeting is.
Okay.
I believe Sabre, I, I haven't spoken to Carl in a couple of weeks. Last time we spoke, he was looking into it as well.
Everyone sort of supportive, take the word sort of, is everyone supportive of Angus continuing? And most likely in the next meeting, we would, uh, this. Does anyone want to put any conditions on that, uh, nod of the F?
Our next meeting is the special meeting on the eighteenth to vote on a mill rate or the budget at that point and set the mill rate. And then our regular meeting is on the twenty-sixth of May.
Okay.
Yeah, that's when I expect that we'll have, we'll have better information and we'll be able to have a better conversation. I just didn't, you know, I, I bring this up because number one, it's what, kind of, it segued perfectly into Bill's question, but also number two. Um, it is, I think it's important that we, we could do this thoughtfully and with as much, uh, as much free borrowing information as we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the town has to have money for the operating costs. I mean, you don't wanna be.
We absolutely do, and that's the fear.
You do not wanna be bankrupt, so, yeah.
No, that's the concern. And that's why I, I actually, that's why I was, um, you know, answered about Essex because Essex used the same program that we did, the low interest.
Yep.
And, uh, and they, they're moving along on this.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm surprised with Essex though, that they have a lot in reserves.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I'm just kinda surprised.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I know that they're moving forward with it. I've got it.
Okay.
While they have, I don't know, while they have a lot of reserves, I mean, we conceptually have about close to two. What do they have, four million, five million? That can get them, that can get them. That can get them, that can get them ninety days, probably.
I don't know their numbers, yeah.
But yes, alright, alright, so I guess the Board of Finance is sending you off to continue to seek information on that.
Other information we'll talk about when we get into the budget, but the, our union did in fact vote to accept the, the change in insurance policies, or insurance carriers from Region Four, self-funded to the Connecticut two point O, so we'll see some substantial savings there.
Good.
Yeah, that looked, that looked really good, I thought.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative, yeah.
That's pretty impressive savings, I thought, I think, yeah.
Yeah. And you know, we'll save as the years go on, too, because their, their average increase is five percent, while this year it's eight percent, but their average over the last five years has been five percent, as opposed to the twelve to eighteen percent that has been.
Yeah, that's, that's been, that's one of the big, that's been one of the big drivers at the, you know, the school budget, has been those big, you know, twelve, fifteen, eighteen percent increases.
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful everything will move over there as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Very good, larger pool of people, saving, greater savings, makes sense.
And who, who again is covered by that?
Municipal employees and the Connecticut River, River Area Health Districts and Brooklyn Commons employees. But those, both of those agencies pay for their insurance through their own, through their own budgets. But they're on, as they're part of the deep river plan.
Well, I'd like to commend them for their favorable vote on that.
Yeah, me too, I, I, believe me, I thank them all.
There is some, and yes, although there is some personal advantage for them, they, since they're now contributing, they will contribute less, so. There is.
Savings of what, fifty thousand dollars, you said?
I think it's.
I think it's more than that.
Ninety, right?
Yeah.
Ninety?
Yeah.
Substantial number. Alright, let's, the only item before we go over to budget that I'd like to deal with is, we have chatted about quite a while to appropriate, authorize the spending of an additional thirty-five thousand dollars by the assessor for the revaluation in this budget year. And we're going to just say we'll, we'll increase the capital funds account, which we put aside, what do we put it at, twenty-five? She needs sixty, so we need an additional thirty-five as the authorization, I need somebody to put for so we can cover our revow cost.
When you say in this year, you mean this, this fiscal year that we're in right now?
This fiscal year we are in right now.
I think twenty, okay.
Okay, and we will spend the remaining forty in, it's in our budget for next year.
And that's thirty thousand.
Did it cost thirty-five thousand dollars more? Why does she need thirty-five?
No, 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 well, hold on, the, we have an agreement with the, the revow company that we will pay a hundred thousand dollars. She started, it was a great deal of mystery, who started who or something, but they started earlier this year because the weather was good, so they brought what would have been cost next year into this year, we're still at the hundred thousand.
Okay, but it's not an additional thirty-five thousand dollars over what was appropriated, or what was the original cost?
Uh, yes is the answer, you're using words that aren't exactly accurate, yes, we assumed it would be a hundred thousand, and we just changed the timing, it wouldn't be incurred, those this year's or next, so yes, nothing new. Other than.
You don't, you don't need a town meeting for that or anything, or probably, we can't have one, obviously, but.
The executive order, the executive orders not require a town meeting for that.
Okay, okay.
We can authorize it.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much, does anyone, can anyone second the motion to increase?
I second it.
Thank you very much, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous, good, alright, that would be, Laurie checked, but I believe that brings us to moving the current proposed budget to the next level? Add on our agenda next?
Correspondence, I have none, I haven't been in town hall, I haven't gone in, I presume there's nothing there in the box.
I'll go look, but I, I don't think so.
Yeah, so I don't have any correspondence at all, and then we're a monthly budget review.
Do you want to do that before we go into the next budget? Okay. Want to have any item? I must admit, I did not look at the current budget, well, I have been looking at it, but to make the budget, but I didn't focus on with any intensity. Anyone have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions about the current budget.
Anyone?
No, not me.
Good, good.
Nope.
Alright. Alright, that then brings us to the proposed budget, Angus, do you have your magic skills to bring it up, so we can look at it?
I will do my best, this.
We can add no more.
There we are, can we see that?
It's swirling around.
Really?
Swirling.
It's a black, black screen.
Yep.
Starting the screen sharing.
Well, let me keep trying.
Oh, just lost it.
It worked the second time you tried to put the Tom's budget up, first time it just swirled for the longest time, but the second time brought it up.
I know, uh, let me try this. No?
No.
Alright. Why is that not working? Try one more time, and then I'm going to have to try something else, so.
But in the email that you sent to us, which one are you trying to pull up?
Working budget.
Angus trying to pull up, Angus would be trying to pull up the normal budget that you're used to looking at, which was actual authorized, posed, changed.
Alright, everyone, give me a minute, I cannot minimize Zoom recording. Alright, give me a second, try and open. Just out of curiosity, can you guys still see me?
Yup.
Yeah. We don't have the budget yet.
No, I understand, I'm going to try and and open.
I have printed copies of it, but that's not going to help anybody else.
No, I have it up in, from the email that was sent the, on whatever day you sent it last.
It does not reflect the health insurance, what I sent to you.
That's okay.
Oh boy. Alright, everybody's there, let's try it now.
There we go, hot dog, we've got all your emails. There we go, slide that over, keep sliding, baby.
I am trying. How's that?
Keep sliding.
A little bit more.
Little, little left, there you go.
Good, good, good.
More, there you go.
Alright, so everybody can see that?
Maybe slide our, slide our pictures over to the right.
I, your picture's on my screen, you guys are all, you're all gone.
Oh, are we?
We're in a row down the bottom on the apple, but we can get rid of that.
It's on my screen.
Yeah, you can, you can slide your own pictures, John.
Exactly, oh yeah, you know what, I actually can move those.
Does, does anyone wish to go through the detail, or should we just focus on the top? With that, I'll say, let's just look at the top, I will read the top for you, and I'm going to start with line thirty-four. The, what you are looking at has the increase in mill rates that we talked about at our last workshop, an increase of point seven five. That mill rate has a shortfall, one hundred and one thousand, seven, three, five dollars, which we would fund with our unassigned surplus. Anyone have any thoughts? I encourage you, this form is awkward, if you look at column E, it is what has been appropriated, what was approved by the town in May, and what we, the Board of Finance, have appropriated, or when we could go down. So it reflects all of the additional appropriations, it does not reflect what I do, what I think we, it does not reflect incremental revenues, which we have received, and it does not reflect lower expenditures. It is my thought that we will end this year with a surplus somewhere in the area of forty to fifty thousand dollars. So that would contribute, I suggest that by the time you get to line F, we would have a surplus of about one, one million nine five, something like that. Which we would then take a hundred and, um, hundred and one out of. Anyone have any thoughts? We happy with where we are? Anyone want to reduce anything, increase anything? Just for.
But how did, how did you get from one, and in F, if I'm looking at this rate, F twenty-five, one million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand and change? How'd you get to one point, one, one million nine hundred thousand?
Because I do not think the anticipated in line F is a negative. I think it will be a positive.
Yeah, oh, okay.
And this budget has E and F are virtually the same thing, aren't they?
They are, yes.
They are the same thing, and then it comes across in some odd fashion, so. And I sent out to you what I thought was how we're going to end it, so, and again, I think the number I sent to you is odd, too, but I do believe we will, I believe we'll end this year with a surplus of about forty thousand. This budget, this anticipated, reflects the additional thirty-five we just put into the assessor's budget.
Is there any way, and I'm going up further, is there any way to change line twenty, instead of saying new fire truck, make it new borrowing? In general, new borrowing, because it.
Well, remember, line twenty is expenditures, if you go up.
No, that's, oh, I'm sorry.
Capital borrowings.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong line.
You're okay.
I'm in the wrong line. Yeah, it does just say capital borrowing, because that's the thing I was trying to. I'm, you know, one thing Smitty did a long time ago was to put that one fifty in, and while I don't want a full one fifty in of the placeholder for borrowing to, to make a payment on any sort of loan, having that loan payment for any sort of loan repayment, such as the short term that we have to do potentially to cover taxes, I think we need to have something in there, I've been thinking about that.
I, I gotta catch up with you, but, well, there is a question, should we down in interest? If we're going to borrow four million dollars, should the budget reflect it and reflect a potential interest payment of twenty thousand dollars?
It should.
Yeah. So changing line twenty to say new fire truck, just to say loan repayment.
Well, I'm going to push back on it, I think we need to add another line.
Yeah, I think that's true.
Was in the budget last year approved by the town, as Tim says, using, I guess. Um, it has to stay in, that was what the budget said it was going to do, we have to just create another line and do.
Create another line, yeah.
Yeah, and it would be under a line, under capital borrowing for the, the fire truck, we put no line there and say tax anticipation, put four million, no. What do we put in there? Zero, we're going to borrow four million and pay four million back. Okay, is that what we should do? Should we put four million new borrowing and four million repayment in the first up there? And then an interest payment down the bottom?
Oh, God.
Yeah, it should, it should zero out, other than like.
Zero out, that's correct.
Other than the de-origination costs.
That's the, the, that's great, just origination, that's correct.
I don't know what the interest, that's why I was asking those questions earlier, because I don't know how much that's going to fit.
So, should we put line, after capital borrowings for the fire truck, put a new line in there that says four million, which is an arbitrary number, and then under expenditure, under fire tracks, we will put repayment of tax anticipation, four million dollars? That, anyone who looks at this, anyone who looks at it should be able to recognize, we intend to borrow a tax anticipation note and pay it back within this year.
Yeah.
I think we have to.
Uh, I do too, I do too.
And then the only other, the only other part we have to account for then are whatever the origination costs are and the interest.
Correct, down in the repayment, we will put twenty, do you want to do twenty-five, something like that?
Yeah, whatever, that, that's the part I don't know, you know, but whatever that answer is, yeah.
I, I think putting twenty is enough, and, and you know, if it's a few thousand over or under, or you're. I think, I think twenty-five is the appropriate number, because we're going to have bond council and then. Yeah, 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 good point.
Okay, okay, cool.
True.
Alright, with that in mind, we can either do that right now, or Angus and I can do it tomorrow, that would put the shortfall, I'm going to add twenty-five, that would put the shortfall of one twenty-six, seven, two, three, five, which we will fund out of surplus. What, what I'm hearing silence, and I'll bring it up, does, does anyone think that seven-five is too high at the moment? If we've been able to bring the shortfall down due to the health insurance, should we change that number?
I'm still a big fan of the point five seven.
Actually, you're, you're good.
I like twenty-nine ninety-nine.
I don't.
I know you don't.
What does it, what shortfall does it give us, Angus? I can't do the math by myself.
You know, I can't, I, I don't know what happens to my computer, but I can't manipulate this one, I can click on it, but I can't make the number. Double click on it? I, I, I clicked about a thousand times on it in the last minute. Oh, it's a, it's a two thousand click.
Yeah, it's that plus, it's a plus formula where you put point five seven instead of point seven five.
No, it's, nothing is, I think that I just don't have this open properly.
I think, yeah, I think you've got a.
I'm going to shrink this down, I'm going to go here, I'm going to do something, and I apologize to all of the people that are watching this, and you guys who are actually suffering through it.
And it's probably going to take it from like one twenty-six up to like one fifty, is what's going to happen.
You cannot see this, right? What's on the screen right now?
Yeah.
We're, we're seeing the old, we're seeing your open email, if you will.
You are.
Well.
Stop sharing, okay.
Yeah.
Now I'm going to share again, I want to share, what is that? How the heck am I going to open that? That's Microsoft Excel, I should be able to see that, you can't see that there?
Okay, there's something new.
There you go, now you got it, now you can.
I got it.
You didn't have the ability to edit before, there you go.
There you go.
Right, yeah, you were just in an email.
So this is what I like.
Ah, I, I like the twenty-nine ninety-nine.
I know, you do.
You gotta, you gotta keep that. Down, man.
I don't like any of it, to be honest with you, I would prefer it to be twenty-nine point four, twenty-nine point zero, but.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, it'd be great if it was fifteen.
Send money back.
But the, what this does, though, this puts us at about two hundred and two thousand dollar. That didn't change up here, it did change up here.
Shut up, John, again.
We add, if we add another twenty-six to this, twenty-five to this, it'd be at. Hundred and eleven thousand. Two hundred and eleven thousand. Which I think is too, too much. I think it's way too much, considering where we're going with this, you know, I.
Is that right, that one eighty-six up there?
Yup.
I see, I haven't, I can't do the math again.
I thought we were lower than that. I thought we were at one oh one before.
We were, just changed the interest rate, we just brought down the.
We brought the mill rate down a quarter. Or not quite a quarter, twenty point two.
That's the difference.
That's a hundred thousand dollars, folks.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I think two hundred is too much.
Yeah, I guess we're crossing the Rubicon.
Two hundred is, two hundred is as high as I would be. I would argue, I will argue very strongly against taking any more than two hundred. Two hundred, I think we'd be okay, but I'm not, I'm not advocating for it. I think we'd be okay.
And where does that put us?
About a hundred and thirty thousand.
For a shortfall?
For the shortfall, yes, gotta add the twenty-five in. There you are. Add twenty to that, eighty.
Okay, wait, go, do twenty-nine nine-nine again.
I'm going to say no.
Yeah, there we go, same.
Maybe add twenty-five to that, and we're over, we're at a two hundred.
No, it's twenty-five anymore.
At that point, you're spending ten percent of your, um, your.
Yep.
That's quite a chunk.
Yeah.
Seventy-five is the right number, it gives us a lot of play.
Is there any indication how the revale is going as far as are we going down with property values even more?
It's not going well. We're going to have a reduction, we're probably going to end up, you know, it's, it's, it's impossible to tell the future, but it, I, I anticipate that we will have a, um, a reduction of our grant list, um, as a result of the revale.
In addition to the reduction in the grant list, there will be a redistribution of values about the town.
That's right.
But the river carried a lot of our costs of the prior revale. The rest of it, I'll pick some of that up.
Yep, and we have had no increase, we, we don't have any room in town right now to increase any of our commercial or our industrial, um, base, so, you know.
How many businesses have we lost so far this month?
None that I'm aware of.
I thought there was one, at least one new open spot downtown.
That hasn't already, that, 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 that closed before this started.
Did it close? Okay.
The corner.
Yeah, there, there's a new owner of that building, and I think, I, I don't know exactly what happened. They left prior to this, and any of this starting.
That consignment store that's on the corner across from the town hall.
Yeah.
They closed, the pasta shop closed.
Yep, pasta shop, all of that happened prior to this. The pasta shop was going to be.
The CBD store closed just recently.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, it says for lease, they're empty.
Wow.
Didn't see that, okay.
Which was it, Laurie?
The CBD store closed.
Oh, they're, they're, they closed, okay.
There's a lease sign there on their door.
Okay, all right.
The, uh, the pasta shop closed, they retired, uh, three months ago. There's a new shop coming in there, furniture store. The, um, the consignment shops closed, uh, as a result of the new ownership of the building, um, again, prior to this starting, the coronavirus starting. The, uh, the Ivory is, is re, is reopening as, uh, Kirtland and Main. Um, probably as, as soon as, as soon as they're allowed to. Um, there is a new pasta shop, a bread, bread store pasta shop on Kirtland Street, right next door to the, uh, to the music store.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have, as far as I know, with, with the pasta shop, or not the pasta shop, with the consignment store, and now the CBD store, we have two storefronts open, and of course, uh, Citizens Bank is, is open as well.
Angus, is the Ivory going to be reopened by the same people?
No. The old owner, the, the owner of the Ivory, two owners, three owners ago.
Who continued to own the building, right?
Pardon?
They owned the building, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, folks, we're dilly-dallying here. What, what say, are we happy with thirteen point zero five?
No.
One eighty, one eighty-five coming out of the surplus?
Oh.
I recognize the notes, but do you just have an alternative?
Thirty point one seven.
Thirty point one seven, good. Seven-five.
How about point seven oh? But it, I'm not sure exactly what amount that would make that thirty point B, but to make it seventy instead of seventy-five?
There it is.
There we go.
It's a one fifty? One fifty-one, one fifty-two?
Okay, that's, that's continued adding that money into that little lineup there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to, I want to just point out that you guys, you're anticipating that this is going to be a bad year, um, and you're working hard to try to keep the tax, the mill rate, um, low, uh, in the low. Um, I, I don't, I'm not advocating for it, and, and it's, it's, but I, I do think that there's, there is a little bit more room. If you wanted to go down to, uh, to thirty point, thirty point oh-five was just about as low as I would, I would be comfortable going.
Sounds good, give it a shot, throw her in.
I'm ready to.
Keep this under two hundred? Pretty close to John's magic number, not John's magic number, but close.
Yep.
Now, is there any tolerance, I know this is something that was kind of touched upon, putting in a line for borrowing with no repayment in this current fiscal, or in this next fiscal year for a vehicle?
The fire truck?
Yeah.
That's what I was recommending, or at least bringing up for next year. Oh, answered, I anticipate John's response, it's a lot to commit to in, in the future. But that's, I, I would like that, you heard, I think we owe these people.
Yeah.
Et cetera, et cetera, I'm not going to repeat myself, we've, we've done it before, but it is, uh, it was the recommendation.
That, that was the recommendation from me as well.
And, and this is something that I was thinking about too, not owing anybody other than the townspeople. Putting aside the desires of the fire department, but the townspeople, that we do have some very aged vehicles. Um, I would strongly urge the selectmen of the three towns to get together with the fire commission to try and put together a mutual aid plan so that we can, going forward, okay, you've got a tanker, you've got a ladder, you've got, so we don't need to be purchasing as many vehicles in the tri-town.
Well, I think that will, that will be, that, that's something that we do discuss, but, um, Tim, Tim and Scott answered that question a little bit today. It's not so much the tankers, it's, it's, or the trucks. It's the personnel that they need to move and the tools that they need to move. But I do think, I do think that the suggestion from Scott and Tim to do, to have a, a professional study done as to what the town needs, and we could maybe even do that study for the region. So that we can, we can really, um, really get a good grip of, of a, of a plan for the next thirty or forty or fifty years.
Well, I, 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 I agree that's a good idea, but we got to be careful we don't lock ourselves into the study because we don't know who's doing the study.
No, I mean, we're not going to do a study if we don't know who's doing it. Well, well, I think, I think it's a smart idea, I think it's a really smart idea for us to get a good idea, so we're not, we're not.
Yeah, we have to bring this up at some time and decide how we're going to handle it.
Yeah.
And that's probably the best way to start, if, no, no other reason, no other way.
Yep.
If, if you want to put the truck in, you may as well just bump it up to a mill, then, and just do it, you know?
No.
No, I don't want to put the truck in.
Nah.
It'll be, it'll be a mill to do that, so.
No, it won't be a mill to do that. If we put the truck in right now, the way that, the way that I proposed that we do it, we will borrow that money in July.
Yeah, I, I get that, Angus, I'm just saying, like, you know.
And, and frankly, a mill is where I think we should be, to be physically, to be.
I, I, otherwise you're kind of cutting it, you're just, you're hiding the third of a mill for the next year, but you may, you know, if you want to be upfront about it, just do it now.
You're, no, I don't, I don't think that's, that's an accurate appraisal, um, of, of what we're doing.
Oh, it's, it'll be a third of a mill in however many years it takes.
It will be a third of a mill for the next five years.
Right.
It is precisely what we did and what the town did last year. And we're, we're, I'm, I'm, I don't want to get back into arguing about this.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about it, I'm just.
No, no, I know, I, I'm, I'm feeling myself start to argue about it again, and I don't want to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing about it, I'm saying if you want to allocate it for this year, just put it in, and it's, it'll be a mill, so there.
Okay.
That's the number.
I won't vote for that.
Not me, a lot, but, I mean, that's what it would be.
Well, we've had that one fifty in the budget for years and years and years and years and years.
This is, this is different than years and years and years.
Oh, I, I, trust me, I'm.
This is different than a lot of years and years and years.
Well, uh, the reason, the only, the only other thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to leave it to you guys, even for the mill rate, um, is, is that, uh, this is how the towns, when they kick the can, this is how towns, this is how states, and this is how federal governments get in trouble with infrastructure when they don't keep up, it's what they want to do, they do. Um, the only reason that this, that hundred and seventy is not already in the budget is because we took a chance on a, on a grant, and we didn't get that grant, which is why that six fifty, we see the six fifty there. It's the only reason that that's there. Um, I understand as well as anybody that they, what, what's going to happen in the next year or two, we don't know. Um, and, and, and there's an awful lot of fear, but I think infrastructure is something that is, um, that is critical to maintain. Because if you kick it down the can, kick the can down the road, you're going to end up paying more later. And that's it, and then.
Angus, got a couple of quick questions?
Yeah.
Have you gotten anything back from Brian? Is there going to be any, uh, you know, money coming back from the elementary school or region four?
They have promised us that there is money coming back, but I have not seen what that number is.
Okay, so if, just hypothetically speaking, if we got fifty thousand, that goes to the general fund balance, correct?
Yep.
So again, hypothetically speaking, that one sixty-one comes down to a hundred and eleven, correct?
Correct, yep.
And then if Bud says we possibly have forty thousand from our budget, that comes down to sixty-one thousand, correct?
That's right.
Wait, wait, hold on, I got to catch up with you, you got to catch up. If, if, if we get money back from the, the school, we'll just add it to our surplus. Correct. Okay, so you would add it to the surplus, it doesn't change the one sixty-one or the one eighty-one. More money to fund it with. Well, yeah, that, that's what I meant, that's what I meant to say. Okay, good, 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 yes. But what I was trying to, what I was trying to draw a, a, a parallel here, Bud, is that we possibly, again, possibly, we could get fifty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollars back from the school and the town. Yes. For extra money this year. That we could put towards our general fund balance, correct? Correct, and used, and which would give us, yes, to cover the, um, the shortfall and give us a bit of a increased surplus, yes. Yes. And, and, I believe all those things to be true, I, I just, I'm resistant to adding anything from school in here.
Yeah, we don't know what it's going to be.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to. No, I think you're right, I think there's. Look outside the box. Yeah, I think the surplus will be a little bit higher, correct? Because i- if that was the case, if we're able, just again, arbitrarily just throwing a number out there, and we're able to grab a hundred thousand dollars, I would entertain Angus's initial proposal there to look at the fire truck come July or August, and if the economy came back around. Yes. Um, I, I'm, I, I would support that. You know, but there's a lot of moving parts here, wondering what the school's going to give us back, what's our final town budget going to end up for surplus, so there's a lot of moving parts, but I would, I would entertain that. If we were to, uh, put another borrowing in this year, a borrowing in this year, and, uh, and match that borrowing with the new fire truck, while it's in the budget, we would not have to proceed with it until the Board of Finance felt comfortable that the, uh, the economy of the town is, were stable. It's not like it's, you know, that's my theory, we would not put that trigger until we were comfortable. And while I said that, the Board of, the Fire Commissioners, they understand that, do they? I think I'm contradicting myself, but anyhow, you would still have control over whether you proceeded, if it was in this budget.
It's like the six fifty that was in last year's budget, we didn't proceed with it, but we had to put that six fifty in the budget just in case.
That's correct. If, if the fire department had to proceed it a little bit more quickly, we would have had no choice but to put it in this budget, that's correct.
I don't even want to put that on them, but yes, if, if, not, not if they had acted quickly, but if the truck had become available, we would have.
Correct.
If it had become available.
Yes.
How, is there any clue on how the availability with the plans that they've already put together? Is there a truck around?
I don't know, Tim is still here or not.
He had mentioned something about a truck in New London.
Yeah, Tim is still here, he's just muted.
Dealership example, but Tim is here.
Yeah, Tim's here, he's just muted.
I'm back.
You're back.
I've been here all along, I've just been trying to follow through everything, so what was the question?
It's a tennis match we're, we're doing here.
Yeah.
If, if your plan, is your plan for the new truck to the point where there's a truck available to match that plan?
Not the truck would, we haven't looked to see if there's stock trucks to match our plan, but, um, the, the, the road that it were taking, be, it's a truck that would be ordered and built. And once you place you the order, you're twelve to fourteen, sixteen months out before you take delivery.
Okay, because I thought that was going to be a, you were looking for a, not a refurb, but one that's already a demo truck, if you will, for lack of a better way of putting it. Something that's already, that covers all the expenses.
You're, you are correct, there are demo trucks available at certain times of the year, the, the manufacturers build them, and then use them for shows and things, but we have not looked at that because that's a, that's a changing market almost daily, um, and you almost have to have kind of money in hand and be ready to go to jump on stuff like that. Uh, kind of like when we bought the ladder truck used, um, we were able to fund the money or allocate the money uh, with a not to exceed, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand at the time, and that's when we could basically, you could go shopping, and we found a truck that fit. So, a demo truck is an option, but you have to be funded and ready to go and be committed to be able to do so, to be able to shop.
Yeah.
Where do we go?
We're on pause, I guess, huh?
Well, well, we're on the same conversation we've had every week, here's my.
I hope, I, I hope I answered it, I, I don't know if I left it too vague or not. I hope, I, I hope I answered it. I, I don't know if I left it too vague or not, but hopefully I answered the question.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, um, this year, the biggest fire show, well, I know. The biggest fire show, the FDIC was canceled. Um, and I don't know about regional fire shows and, and the, the amount of trucks that are built. That are show trucks that aren't committed this year might be less because of COVID. And the trade shows that are out there, the biggest of which is in Indianapolis every year, which was canceled. There's hundreds, a couple hundred thousand people, firemen that go to that show every year and it was canceled. Thus, those trucks that they were built, or maybe they weren't built, so it, it would limit. I, I'm guessing, I don't know, but I would, I'm guessing that the availability of demo trucks or whatever might be less this year than, than in past because of what we're going through right now.
I, yeah, I don't gamble and if I had to, I would, I would follow you with that, Jim, as far as, uh, that would be my guess. You're right. FDIC was canceled and I. I don't know about the, uh, the, the one here in the northeast that used to be up at the Big E is now at Mohegan Sun or Foxwoods the last couple of years. I haven't heard on that one. Um, so time will tell, but I would, I would. I would agree with you, Jim, that probably the, the demo market may be on the lower side or slimmer side this year, just because their. Manufacturers could be holding off and building stock trucks. I don't know. But we haven't really looked at that yet. Or recently, I should say.
Are there any other grants out there, Tim, that you, that we should, you should, we should be looking at besides the one that we were rejected for? Are there, are there any others out there that we're looking at or should be looking at?
Well, the, the, um, Assistant Chief Carap and, uh, Deputy Chief Jim Budney, along with, uh. Angus and I think some other town hall staff just applied for one for. Uh, SCVAs for Angus, um. The, the, the Scott Air Packs, if you will.
Yeah.
And as far as apparatus, Angus, I don't know if you've seen any additional grants for any. I, I, I don't know of any off the top of my head, but that doesn't mean there's none out there.
Not for, not, I haven't seen anything for apparatus. Um, and by apparatus, I'm, I'm kind of grabbing at terminology. For vehicles, I haven't seen anything. For equipment, safety equipment, I've seen things. For firehouses, I've seen, uh, grants, but those grants are all for, uh. Professional firehouses, not for a volunteer. So we're constantly looking. Um, and we, and I, my hope is that we're going to get much more aggressive in our. Our grant application.
Do you have a professional grant writer, or are you a collection of people who are writing the grants?
We had a professional grant writer who, um. Ran into a bunch of, uh. Personal troubles. There is a grant writer who, uh. Scott has, um, pointed out, who writes grants pretty much exclusively for fire, um, apparatus. So we will be contacting him and seeing what kind of advice he has.
All right, folks, uh, we're back to the fire truck. Um, if I was to count votes, I bet you I had the two in myself, uh, unless, uh. This have changed by the other members of the board. I, I, we're not going to deal fire truck this year. Anyone?
No.
Do you want to think about that, Bill?
He's built, he's made up his mind.
My mind is a bit long time ago, you know that.
Uh, and, and, and I highly respect your decision. I mean, it, uh, it's, man, I just lean slightly that you got to keep investing. Times are bad, but I recognize the validity of your point. Anybody else, uh, I'm, I'm putting Laurie and, uh, and Russ to the a's and I'll the b, which gets us the ties, so it gets us nowhere, so. With that in mind, lest anyone would like to continue the conversation, I'm going to bring us back to mill rate and surplus. Uh, are we, uh, we have to make, well, we don't have to make a decision on anything other than we're to send expenditures of eighteen million. Two hundred and fifty-six, nine, three, eight to a town meeting. But it seems that when we stay in front of the town, how, whoever listens, they should know the estimate of our mill rate. Anyone, uh, anyone want us to stop someplace else? Need to take a.
Because this is where we're sitting right now. It's thirty point five, point oh five.
That is where we are sitting right now, correct? And a shortfall of add twenty-five to the one sixty, one five, something like that.
You're adding that twenty-five in there, we.
Yes, for the tax anticipation note.
So the shirt falls at one thirty or one sixty?
A one, well, one sixty-one on this page, but you got to add the twenty-five, which is what we anticipate paying for the tax anticipation note.
Right.
About a hundred and eighty-six, seven, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Amazing, good. Now we've accomplished a couple of things here. We, uh, stay under the two hundred, then we dip into our surplus. As Dwayne pointed out, I think we've got some positive surplus, but nevertheless, we're under the two hundred. Uh, and watch me catch John and say, we're close to John's number. Trying to get.
And I like, and I like John's number. But we crossed the Rubicon.
We have crossed the Rubicon, there's no doubt about it. And if, if we go back to anything less than the thirty point zero five, we think more out of surplus. It, uh, aren't people's thoughts? We got what, twenty, uh? We're trying to stay under two hundred for the borrowing. From the un-surplus, unassigned surplus.
I mean, that puts us at one eighty-six, seven in, in surplus that we'd have to take.
That's correct.
Um. I, I, I'm in favor of the. One eighty-six, seven eighty-one, bringing that to the hearing.
Okay. Which would mean that the thirty point zero five is, uh, Laurie's vote? Yeah.
Well, no, my vote is on the expenditure. Bringing the amount of expenditures of one eighty-six.
Right.
Seven eighty-one to the town hearing, not on a mill rate.
Well, are, but you gotta tell the town what the shortfall is, don't you?
They're, they're related.
Yeah. The two are related, you're trading off one with the other.
Yeah, you do one, do one, you end up with the other.
Right, I'm sorry. So the expenditure. The ex, yeah, you're right, I did put the wrong one in there. Um.
I think we're.
So it's.
The expenditure nine, eighteen, two, five, six.
Two, six. Eight, two, oh, two, plus twenty-five. Would be eighteen, two ninety-three, two, oh, two. Total expenditures.
Okay, good, 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 yes.
That's what I, I wanted to bring up. Eighteen, two ninety-three, two, oh, two.
Eighteen, two ninety-three?
How'd you get the two ninety-three?
That, that's the, uh, eighteen, two fifty-six, nine thirty-eight, plus twenty-five.
Couldn't that get you into the seventies or the eighties?
Did I add it wrong?
Yeah, that should be eighteen, two, uh, two eighty-one.
Two eighty-two, nine.
Okay, wait a minute, because you've got, we've got eighteen.
Two, five, six.
Two sixty-eight.
No, eighteen, two, five, six.
Second row, gee.
Yeah, gee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong.
It's okay, it's misl- the F is mislabeled, so you had the right to be wrong, about wrong.
Okay, so two. Wait a minute. Eighteen, two, five, six, nine, three, eight.
Yep.
Plus twenty-five.
Plus twenty-five.
Is eighteen, two eighty-one.
There you go.
Uh, wait a minute. Hold on, I gotta get. Yeah, with me a sec, I gotta. Two eighty-one, nine thirty-eight.
Yep.
Okay, eighteen, two eighty-one, nine thirty-eight.
Yep. Eighteen, two eighty-one, nine thirty, s- eight.
Yep. That's the expense, that's total expenditures.
Right. That's the only thing I'm voting on. I'm not voting on anything else right now.
Well, you can't do that.
It all drives it.
And I say you can't do it. You can do it if you want, except if we're going to stay in front of the town, we got to let the town know how we're going to finance it. I believe we have that obligation to them.
Right, but we never make a motion, a, a vote on the mill rate at this point in time.
We are not voting, I, I don't, we're not voting on mill rate, but I believe town has a right to know what budget will require them to pay.
What we're gonna, what we're, what's going to happen tonight is that you're going to vote on the budget as it sits in front of you now with an expenditure. Of the total expenditure of this much. After the public hearing, you guys will reconvene. And determine whether the, the information that you've gotten is, um, is, is going to sway you or not. If you stay the same, then we go to the, to your special meeting. And you will make a vote on the budget. As soon as you vote on that budget, you will have another vote to set the mill rate.
Right.
Um, but to Bud's point and to my point. Whatever you vote on today is going to result in a mill rate.
Right, right.
That mill rate, I'm going to prepare a book that we've been preparing for five or six years, maybe more. That takes every property in town and says, this is what this increase is going to do to your taxes this year. People can come and see that, or I can, however they want it, however they want to do that. Uh, but, but it is, it's, it's incumbent upon us to share this information as soon as we can. Um, so that people can, can raise their questions. It's especially important this year when we don't have a town meeting. Yep, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, you, you wanted to stay under two hundred thousand on that number up there. Say you went to one ninety, what does that number come, what happens to that number? Down below in the mill rate?
It's, it stays the same. We're at, we're at a hundred and eighty-six thousand now.
Oh, so you're at a hundred and ninety now, for all part of your purposes.
Close enough.
There's no way to get rid of that point oh five, is there?
Click on my computer, I can do it, but I don't want to. Splitting hairs at this point, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't have that many hairs to split, so. Losing more every day.
Yeah.
I have no problem splitting a hair.
All right, um, I suggest we'll send the eighteen to whatever the number is.
Two eighty-one, nine thirty-eight.
It, it currently implies a thirty point zero five mill rate, which. For our final decision, and it suggests we're going to take out approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from our surplus.
Yes.
Does anyone want to formally vote on that, or does everyone just sort of nod quietly?
No, we have to formally vote on it to go to the town hearing.
Uh, well, we need to vote on the expenditures, right?
Right, and I made the motion. We need a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Sir.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I thought I heard a unanimous exact.
Who, who said no?
Me. Just one.
Russ, okay.
John.
John.
Oh, John, I'm sorry. I don't have the faces up here right now.
Russell did too, so you have two nays.
Two nays, thank you.
Think I'm cutting out a little.
Do the two nays wish to express any thoughts? On why they voted nay, or do you think we're supposed to imply it?
Can I ask why you voted nays?
Yes. That's my question too.
Is there an obligation to, to explain or?
No, I don't think there's an obligation, I, if volunteered to.
John's having some trouble with his computer.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, cutting in and out a little bit, sorry.
John, we were just asked to, um, I don't know if you heard, but Bud and Carmella have asked folks to explain their nays. You certainly are not obligated to.
Okay, yeah, uh, I, I just think that. It'd be nice to keep it under thirty, so just a little bit, oh, just a slight little bit less for the taxpayers of Deep River, a burden this year. So that's my thinking.
It's good thinking, and you, you have the right to vote. But you're not voting on the mill rate, you're voting on the expenditures right now. We haven't decided on.
Understood, understood. So like. I would like to.
Go on record to the intention. Okay, that is fine.
Well, I know where John is coming from, and that's why I asked the question about the, the, the number up above. Uh, staying under two hundred thousand, would that bring us to thirty? By another.
You're not voting on mill rate, you're voting on expenses.
I understand that, but I.
Unless you're going to reduce the expenses somehow.
No, I think what, what we're talking about is that. Uh, actually, it's one sixty-one, seven eighty-one we're looking at, but then you add that twenty-five thousand to it.
Correct. Uh, all right, um. We have, uh, we have agreed on what the expenditure is being sent to the town. And, uh, when I put my presentation together, it can be, I can imply that where we think we are, but. Still to be determined what the mill rate is, I guess, although Angus is going to prepare something with a thirty point zero five, so, um.
Well, I've got in here noted desire to keep the mill rate at less than, uh, thirty, which this expenditure amount would be at approximately thirty point oh five.
And true. Okay.
So I've, I've got that in the discussion.
Okay, well done. All righty, um, I'll call this discussion over. And it is time to go into executive session.
Yes.
All right, um.
Who has included an executive session?
Just the two boards, only the two boards. No audience is allowed.
Do we have an audience with us? Is Tim still with us?
Yeah, we still have an audience. We've got the, uh, reporter, as far as I know. Yeah, Valley Shore and. Tim, that I can tell.
Uh, Angus, can you, while we're having the conversation, can you dislocate those folks or? Have that flexibility?
I could, I can do that myself. I can dislocate myself.
It is not that we don't want you to participate, it's personnel matters and.
I understand. Appreciate the time and you guys all have a good night.
Thank you, Tim.
A lot.